Good evening, everybody. It's 7 o'clock and the weather is beautiful. So we are going to get going with the goal of wrapping this thing up by no later than about 8:30 or possibly sooner depending on how we're doing, how fast Ryan's talking. So first and foremost, thank you for being here. It's nice to see you full house. We have, all of our boards are here. We have South Haven Township, we have the Housing Commission, and the South Haven City Council in some way, shape, or form. So welcome to all the boards. We do not need to take attendance. So all I'm going to do is call the meeting to order, and I'm going to introduce Mr. Ryan Kilpatrick from Housing Next to get us started. So Ryan, thank you for coming.
Thank you and good evening.
Good evening.
Hi. By show of hands, how many people were here for the last session in September? Fantastic. Okay, great. So my role tonight is relatively limited. I was going to do a reintroduction of some of the concepts that we talked about at the last meeting, but since so many of you were here for that, I'm going to make that relatively quick. And then more exciting, we're going to start to talk about some building types that we think make sense particularly for the Overton site, but also for properties around the region. Mike Corby is here with Integrated Architecture. He's a partner of Housing Next on this project. And he's spent a lot of time really dialing in on how do we get more livability as well as more affordability simultaneously. So most of tonight will be focusing on those things, and then we'll give you an opportunity to go up and kind of touch and examine some of the images and weigh in on which ones you like and which ones you don't like. So relatively quickly, again, what I'm going to do here tonight is talk you through some of the core data that relates to what we're trying to do and what we're trying to achieve. And I always start out these conversations to make sure that we're on the same page. When I talk about what is affordable housing, what I mean is can you afford it, right? And "you" being the operative word. And this always depends on how much you make. So some of us are earning $26,000, $30,000 a year and working retail or service industry. Some of us are earning $45,000, $50,000 a year and working in the manufacturing sector. And others are earning $85,000, $90,000 a year, also maybe in manufacturing and engineering or in the corporate world. But for all of those income bands, if any of those folks are spending more than 30% of their income on housing, they're spending too much. And this is the definition that the federal government uses when they allocate tax credits or they allocate subsidies. It's also the definition that guys like Dave Ramsey use when they look at what is a financially sustainable household. So it's a pretty well-accepted standard that if you're spending more than 30% of your income, you're spending too much. So in Van Buren County, currently, the median household income is $51,800. And so if you're earning that amount, if you're earning the middle amount of revenue per household across Van Buren County, what you can afford at most is about $1,300 in a rental payment or a mortgage payment. And so what this slide is telling you is, we can still build a one-bedroom apartment pretty easily and have you come in well below that $1,300 a month. We can probably build a two-bedroom apartment that is priced at below $1,300 a month, but it's close. It really depends on the level of finish and the cost of the land and how much we need to do in terms of excavating soil or remediating any environmental conditions. It's unlikely that we can build a brand-new three-bedroom apartment today at an affordable rate for a household that's earning $50,000. And so it's important to keep this in mind as we think about how are we going to get to affordability and for whom are we making these units affordable. The basic costs of construction make it difficult to build large units. Now, if we do the same calculation for the same income for somebody that wants to buy a home, their maximum mortgage is going to be about $200,000 and still have it be affordable. So we can still find existing houses in Van Buren County that are priced well below $200,000, but most of them are probably going to need some work, right? Either you've got to be a carpenter yourself, or a tradesman or tradeswoman, and you've got to be able to put in some sweat equity, or you're going to have to pay somebody to put in some work into that house. An existing home that's been refurbished, where all the electrical and HVAC has been updated, you're probably not going to find that anymore in Van Buren County for under $200,000. The market has exceeded that price point if you want a well-finished, older home. And new construction is generally out of the question based on what's been built in the last six or seven years. If you want that new construction home to come in under $200,000, we're just not seeing it. Because the cost of construction, and I'll talk about this again in a minute, we're at roughly $200 a square foot all in. So when you multiply the number of square feet that you think you need by $200, that gets you a pretty basic price point for what it's going to cost you to buy a new home. So this is an example of what we're seeing in the marketplace right now in the South Haven...
Can I ask a quick question?
Yeah.
When you say the price, does that include land for that affordability?
Yes, yes. So the question is, when we say $200 a square foot, does it include land? In most instances, the answer is yes. That would include both land and the cost of utilities. Again, it all depends on the site. It all depends on what your level of finish is, right? So if you want really high-end millwork and custom cabinetry and all those things, your price goes up exponentially. But if you're doing a basic level of finish, we can probably make it work at $200 a foot, including land and utilities. So quickly, this is about where new construction is coming in today, in the immediate South Haven region. Most new homes that are coming on the market are roughly in this price point. So I want to talk a little bit about who we know we need to serve and what the demographics look like. The total population in the city is 4,300. Median age is now 55. That's gone up pretty significantly over the last 10 years. It was below 50 in 2010. Now, these last two are really interesting. This is impact in price. We've got more than 3,300 homes in the city of South Haven, but 1,000 of them are listed as vacant by the Census Bureau because they're seasonal. And now, that's an important part of the local economy, right? Those seasonal households generate income in the summertime months, and a lot of businesses thrive on that income. Simultaneously, it's taking a housing product for folks who want to live here year-round essentially off the market. And so the folks who do live here year-round are competing for a more limited availability of supply. And that competition drives up price, right? So these are basic economic factors that are at play right now because we've essentially removed roughly a third of the housing stock from the available supply in the local community. Now, the next thing I've done here is combined the city and the township so that we can begin to look at how does the data begin to play out when we look at both of those together. The population goes up, almost doubles. The median age comes down. We've got younger people living in the township on average. The total number of households has gone up to 5,400. And the number of seasonal homes didn't increase by all that much. We went from about 1,000 to about 1,200. So most of you probably already knew this, but it was news to me that a majority of the seasonal rentals were in the city of South Haven. And then broadly, across both of those municipalities, the number of units that are income-restricted, where there is some kind of a cap on what the property manager or the owner can rent or sell those units for, the number of those units is 408. And so when we compare those number of income-restricted units to the total number of households, it's roughly about 5%, right? So that's a pretty small percentage of the total number of housing units across the community. And so this isn't necessarily a judgment in any way, but it's something to keep in mind as we think about what should we do with the Overton site, and then as we think about what should we do with other potential pieces of property. Do we want to restrict incomes, or do we want to restrict rents on any of those, or not? Just being able to look at what do we have today in terms of stock and affordability is a helpful metric. So as I mentioned earlier, when we have a limited amount of supply and we have a fair amount of demand, that demand tends to push price up. And that's the basic law of economics. As we think about, and in just a minute, I'm going to pass this off to Mike Corby, and he's going to talk about the kinds of housing products that we can build. These are the five things that I want you to keep in the back of your head. So the first one, we covered these at the last session. The developer doesn't pay the costs that we add onto a project. So for everything that we really want to see in that project that costs money, that cost gets passed on to the end buyer or the intent. It is very unlikely that we'll find a developer, unless it's the general public, unless we're funding this with tax dollars, which I'm not sure we are, the developer will always pass those costs on to the end buyer or end renter. And so keep that in mind as we think about what are our priorities. It doesn't mean we should throw all of our priorities out the window. It just means we want to be selective. Housing demand is regional, and that's why I'm really grateful that we have both the township as well as the city engaged in this conversation. We're specifically looking at a city site, and what we're trying to do is evaluate demand across the region and come up with solutions that are scalable and replicable across multiple pieces of property, and then pilot it on one site, see how the market reacts, see how it works, and then figure out how do we do this again on another site, but improve upon the ball. If local zoning requires expensive housing, then your housing will be expensive. And by that statement, what we mean is, if local zoning says you've got to have a lot of land for every house that you build, and every house that you build has to be large, those are things that make housing expensive. And it seems like a no-brainer, right? Like, obviously. But if you really dig into the local zoning codes, many of them have minimum requirements for the amount of square footings that you can build, and minimum requirements for the size of the piece of land that you can build upon. And those are important characteristics that drive costs. Housing costs are less affordable if transportation costs are high, right? So we have a seasonal economy that is really driven by the service industry for a couple of months a year. And if all of those service workers are forced to drive into town from the less expensive rural areas, one of the things they do is occupy all of your downtown parking. So that when tourists come into town, they've got to circle the block a few times before they can find a place to park. But the other thing that they're doing is spending all of that income that they saved by living way out in the county, they're spending that income on their transportation, right? So what we haven't done is saved them a heck of a lot of money. But what we have done is inconvenience them. If they've got childcare that they've got to worry about, if they've got a doctor that's close to home and not close to work, those are things that become less convenient because we've forced them to spend more money on transportation by giving them, the only affordable options are well outside of the city. And then lastly, this is a generally very common rule. We see it in cities that are 50 years old or older. Today's housing is the most expensive housing, but yesterday's luxury housing becomes today's affordable house, right? And by that, what I mean is, if you've got an older home, as we said earlier, that needs a fair amount of work, that needs some updates, that home tends to be less expensive than a brand-newly constructed home. And the reason that that's important for tonight's perspective is that what we're talking about is a clean slate property, a property that has no buildings on it today. And that means everything that we build there will be relatively expensive compared to buildings that have been in existence for 50 or 100 years. So it will cost us $200 a foot or more to build new buildings. And I want you to keep that in mind because what we're going to do is talk about is it affordable or isn't it affordable? And we're going to say, for whom is it affordable? Can the bartender afford it? Can the bookseller afford it? Can the baker afford it? And what we have to do is keep in mind, the cost is the cost. We're going to do everything we can to make sure that we keep those costs in check and that we're building a product that you're all proud to have in your community at the end of the day. But these are important constraints that we've got to remember over the long term. So the two ways that we can really go after affordability in the community is to allow people to build buildings that are less expensive, and simultaneously to say, these are the things that are important to us, right? So whether it's architectural design, whether it's durable materials, whether it's the way that it relates to the street or the public spaces, those are things you can clarify and make sure are done well while also allowing for buildings to be maybe less large, or allowing buildings to be placed on lots that are less large. The second part of this, and this is critical, is if you really want it to be affordable, it's going to require some level of subsidy, right? And so this is a difficult thing sometimes to hear and to really grapple with. But if we want to make sure that it's affordable to the folks that we really need to target, our first-year schoolteachers and preschool teachers, our first-year firefighters and police officers, our EMTs, those folks are earning between $12 and $18 an hour. And it's very difficult to build brand-new product to somebody that's affordable in that price point unless we're in some way subsidizing it. Now, there's a lot of ways that that can happen. It doesn't mean that we're just giving away tax dollars. It can be an investment that returns over a long-term period, but we're not going to see the kind of return that a traditional developer sees. And we've got to accept that or move on, right? One or the other. So what we're dealing with tonight is an existing piece of property. It's often referred to as the Overton site, on the corner of Indiana and Elkenburg. I think I'm about to turn it over. Oh, no. First, I'm going to talk to you about the master plan. This just takes a minute. But what I want you to be aware of is that we spent a fair amount of time not only looking at the zoning code, but also looking at the city's master plan to ensure that whatever the building types were, they were in line with what the master plan was calling for. And so the master plan is really calling for a variety of housing types, not just single-family detached, but alternative types of housing that can also be owner-occupied or renter-occupied, but that those housing types fit within the context of the neighborhood that they're in. Not proposing 12-story buildings in a neighborhood full of two-story single-family homes. So again, another goal in the master plan is to provide for that diversity of housing options as well as supporting a wide range of income categories. And that's another thing that we want to make sure that we're imbuing within this particular piece of property, and hopefully in other development sites around the region, is providing for different housing solutions for different income owners. So for about 30 years, we have built neighborhoods that were income-segregated for the most part. We've said, the $200,000 houses go here, the $300,000 houses go over here. And what we're proposing in this plan is that we might have some folks who are earning $15 an hour, living in the same neighborhood as people who are earning $100,000 a year. And if the neighborhood is well-designed and there's a strong sense of community, we think that we can pull that off. We've seen it happen in a lot of other communities. It's about strong execution and ensuring that the design is good. And then lastly, we want to ensure that we're incorporating design principles that provide a character consistent with the existing or desired character of the city of South Haven. There's a lot of ways to read that, but I read that as saying, what exists is important, and we want to honor what exists. We don't want to turn our back on it. We want to celebrate it and build upon what's already there. And so you'll start to see that in the plans that Mike Corby has put together along with his team at Integrated Architecture. And I'm going to invite Mike up now to really walk us through what his team has done to evaluate the site and the kinds of buildings that they're proposing for the site. And then from there, I'll have one more slide to talk with you about, and then we'll go over and look at some of the boards.
Good evening. I'm going to pass out... I didn't, with the winter warnings, I didn't expect this kind of crowd, but you guys are used to it, so what was I thinking? I'm going to pass out some images that are represented in what I'm going to go through, and just so that you've got a little bit easier way to kind of look at some of the kind of housing types. And then I am also going to ask, since you traveled through the weather to get here, I noticed a number of you were looking at those boards. So we're going to talk a little bit more planning today. But there are a lot of different images of different housing types that are kind of represented on those four boards. In front of the boards are some sticky dots. There are red dots and green dots. And I prefer you put more green dots than red, but what I'd like you to do before you leave today is just take a look at some of the images, the ones that appeal to you for whatever reason. Put a green dot on them. And if there are a couple that you just absolutely don't like, then you have the option to put a red dot on them as well. But I prefer you focus on the green more than the red, but I think it would help us just get a better understanding of the things that appeal to you and maybe the things that maybe aren't so good, but mostly the things that appeal to you. So I have 50 copies of these, so I'm going to maybe see if I can get somebody to help me distribute them to the tables. If you're here with somebody else, maybe just take one so that everybody can at least get a copy of this. And if there is a little place to put notes, if anybody wants to do that and doesn't have a pen, I brought a bunch of pens, so... I think one of the things that we look at whenever we do it, when we look at a design or development like this, is really trying to understand what are the principles that we should be using to guide us. And didn't want to kind of go through a lot of them. We wanted to focus on the ones that we think are the most important, especially with this particular site. The idea that, as Ryan mentioned, that we're putting, what we want to create is a community that has a sense of place in it of its own, but it also ties into the community that is surrounding it. So you'll see that in just how we've looked at not just the way that it plugs in in terms of the circulation elements and the pathways, but also taking advantage of the things that are around it. And just as we're looking to kind of plug into the community, we want the community to be able to plug into this development. So it's not meant to be a closed community. It's meant to be open and knit into the network that's already existing. The idea of walkability, I think sometimes people have a reference point that when we start to look at density, we look at it in a way that maybe isn't as positive. Therefore, it's very car-centric. You get a lot of units on a site. You get the cars, and you're done. What we really want to do is kind of balance the idea that you can have density and you can create pathways that are very pleasant and walkable and that knit into and feel much like the neighborhood around it. So it's kind of a win-win situation in both ways. And I think doing communities that have density and have a strong sense of walkability can be very, very strong and appealing. And affordability, I think, as Ryan showed you, that's the biggest challenge we have today. A good portion of the work we do is housing in Michigan. So we're doing work up in the northern parts of the lower peninsula, all the way through the state to Flint, to kind of the southwest area. And the thing that we're really having to do is, as designers, figure out ways that we can kind of bridge the gap between what the cost of housing is and your ability to afford that housing. So density helps. Some of the construction techniques that we're exploring with other partners, builder partners, help. But just really trying to get the situation where you're balancing, again, this is all a balance, how you can kind of create a strong sense of community, get a quality product, knit it into the community, and have it affordable. So as I said, community is very important. I think you'll see how we've kind of tried to give it a sense of place in the plans that we're going to go over today, but also try to create not just the spaces that you live in, but the spaces around you that you have to enjoy. So this site has a lot of great proximate amenities that we could tie into and really get it to be knit into the community very well. Walkability, the relationship of vehicles to people, to your homes and the spaces that kind of link those, and the types of framing we can do with landscaping, the types of pathways we can create with how we use landscaping and the sidewalks, the whole notion of front porches, things of that nature, all contribute to kind of a sense of walkability. So whether you're in the neighborhood itself and you want to kind of have a sense of, an ability to walk around and understand and know your neighbors, or whether you want the neighborhoods around you to kind of be able to kind of knit in and kind of enjoy your part of the pathways. Affordability, again, just making, we have the ability now to kind of create an environment that could appeal to a broad range of incomes. Also has the ability to kind of plug into a lot of great amenities around it. So this is the challenge that we'll have today. And I think one of the things that, you know, we're not going to be building Chicago brownstones here because it just would not be affordable. We would not target what we want. But we want something that's pleasant and high-quality. So Ryan gave you a little understanding of the site here. It's kind of got some interesting characteristics to it. This is kind of a diagram that maybe better helps you understand how we've kind of understood its context. The trail is here, and which is, again, I think, because the trail became the trail after a lot of the housing was in here, a lot of the backs of the houses are turned to the trail. I was just in Denver over the weekend visiting my son and his wife, and there are a lot of wonderful trails in Denver. And it was interesting, the older housing stock, again, turned their back. You kind of felt like you were invading them. The newer housing stock really kind of said, let's front ourselves on the trail. Let's let the trail become kind of our front door. And they just felt better. They felt more connected. And so we kind of looked at that in a different way. We're able to kind of deal with the trail now that the trail was there before we are. And so how we relate to that was kind of an important consideration. There are a lot of other things around the site. There's a park just adjacent to the site. So our thought is, we don't need to create another open space just for the sake of creating an open space. We do have some community space that helps kind of let this community have a sense of place. But we don't need to kind of do some things that are already in place. So how we knit into the neighborhood was very important. We've got kind of established pathways in terms of vehicular and walkable pathways. We want to kind of, again, not look foreign to that and look kind of like we're actually meshing very well. So we're taking Humphreys here to the east. We're kind of using that as our cue and allowing that to kind of move westward onto our property and ultimately to the trail itself. So if you're living more easterly to the site, you should feel comfortable just walking through this new neighborhood and feeling comfortable walking to the trail. There's another pathway that we created to the north that runs east-west. It doesn't line up with the existing street network, so we looked at maybe making that just purely a pedestrian way so that you've got the ability to kind of move, again, eastward through the site. And then we've got a north-south pathway that allows us to have some measure of walkability even within the site. We've got some weird or strange little edges, not by design, just by circumstance. So how we use these, there is a small outline set here on Indiana that we have to kind of contend with. So we want to make sure that we're not disrupting what's going on there. We're kind of, again, complimenting it. There is a portion of us, I'm not sure exactly what the future plans are, but there's another portion that was kind of part of that cleanup process that I'm not sure what the future is of that. But it's, again, another opportunity maybe that we have to kind of have an element that's on that trail that also kind of becomes an amenity, not just for this development, before the neighborhood. There is a larger scale, I would say, kind of mini development here. The history of this property is more industrial in nature. So again, trying to look at how we kind of take some of the cues from the surrounding areas or the heritage of the site and take that into consideration. You know, we are a new neighborhood in a network of neighborhoods, so I don't think it's a bad thing either to kind of figure out how we can kind of be a new neighbor and have a sense of place even though we're kind of weaving ourselves into the existing neighborhood fabric.
Sir?
Yes.
The blue stripe and the orange area.
This was the old kind of industrial area that was here. And it's starting to kind of reference some of our planning. We thought, as we look at density, and we look at creating some different types of housing on the property, the proximity kind of to a more dense kind of mini development here and kind of the heritage, what was there before, kind of the cues that that had in the neighborhood, this would be the more appropriate area for something that went a little bit more vertical, had a little bit more density versus these areas here that are a little bit more tied into kind of single-family homes. So just from a planning perspective, and I may be jumping ahead a little bit, but we kind of looked at this being the more dense housing types here, a little less dense here, but still all trying to be challenging the kind of density conversation a little bit. Any other questions at this point?
Excuse me. Is there a place for the water runoff now? Where would that be located? Is that back in that square?
Yeah, I think I'm not going to focus a lot on systems, but obviously, anything we do is going to not just tie in from a vehicular and walkable sense, but it has to tie in from a stormwater and drainage sense. So that'll be something that we definitely... So that'll be something that we definitely have to consider.
Is there a place for modular housing in any of these new homes?
I suppose. I mean, I think we haven't really focused on how we implement this. But I will tell you that we can't not start to understand some of the other building techniques that are out there because labor costs are so extremely high. Modular housing, when I say modular housing, I talk about it and how something gets put together, not necessarily a quality issue. Because, so there are a lot of companies that will build in a controlled environment and then they bring the product onto the site and then it's put together that way. So we are looking at that. Again, that's another facet of this that we'll have to look at. But I think right now it's been more of a planning exercise.
I wanted to acknowledge that I failed to tell you when we started Mike's portion of this, was that this is really a preliminary site plan. This isn't the plan. This is a plan that we really want to hear your feedback about. And this is a plan that's been designed with the expertise of Mike's team and our understanding of how to leverage cost efficiencies, as well as some of the other tools that we know work to bring costs down and to bring in other financial resources to ensure that some of these units can be affordable. So, well, I think the questions about stormwater and modular construction and a lot of other questions are going to be really great. This is a really preliminary opportunity for us to give you a sense of what we're thinking and for you to provide some feedback, both in this question and answer format, as well as in kind of voting on some of the images later. So I just wanted to clarify that we're not anticipating that this is the plan and you should like it. What we're anticipating is that you'll give us your feedback about this. And this is still a very iterative, flexible process.
Yes, so I hope you, I think you have to understand some of the underlying, that's why I started with the attributes and the guiding principles because those are the most important things that need to endure. The type of housing that we put on here is still a question. But I think what we're trying to do is leverage our ability to create a strong community within the community, leverage our ability to kind of get decent density without giving up some of the important principles that we feel should drive any of the communities or neighborhoods in the community. So those are the kind of enduring things. But the reason I passed out the product type or the housing types to you is just so you get a sense of that these are, these are not, I mean, these are efficiently designed units, but they're not tiny homes. These are not some sort of a faddish-type product or a trendy-type product. These are places that people will be able to live, whether you're younger and looking for a house or a home or older. So you've got the ability to kind of appeal to broader demographics. So again, the heritage of the site, I think, was important just to understand that that's what people experience for decades. And not that that's what we want to recreate, but I think we're re-establishing something that didn't have, it wasn't a single-family neighborhood. It was, it had kind of a mass to it and a presence to it that while we don't want to recreate it, we want to kind of understand that that's kind of its, what its historic kind of reference was in the city. So here's the plan. That, as Ryan said, we just want to get your thoughts on it. I think the things that I want you to understand and be able to witness very clearly are these guiding principles that we established and that I went through early on. So the pathways, the trail is here. And you can see the condominium building to the west. So what we've, what you're starting to kind of hopefully read here just by the way we've rendered this is, this is the connection to Humboldt here. It's very much, and I've got a few images that show what it's like to be in that, but it's got the very much the same kind of walkability sense to it. It's got sidewalks, it's got front doors. So even though these units are more townhouse-type units, we want them to have porches that are on the roadway so that you've got that engagement between the person walking and the resident. We've got, the front doors to these units, for instance, face the trail so that they've got, even though there's the roadway there with some on-street parking, they've got their front porches and their sense of kind of hospitality facing toward the trail versus the back of their house. Really tried to focus on, even though vehicles are, and for at least a foreseeable future, still going to be part of how we connect to one another in a broader sense, try to get them so that they're not as much front and center. So you won't, we really try to limit the amount of garages or vehicles that you kind of have to engage by way of a garage. We do have a few units along here that will have garages adjacent to them, but they're duplex units, duplex townhouse units with adjacent garages. And again, I'll show you the product type in a second. Where we need a little bit more support for a little bit more dense housing types, so these are two-story, possibly three-story stacked flats, we call them. So they are, again, there's an image of them in there. So they would be a combination of probably one and two-bedroom units. Their parking areas are kind of in the middle so that they aren't as visible and they don't disrupt the walkable sense that we want to maintain. We've got some, what we call type B units, which are in your information as well. And these are basically townhouse-type units. These do not have garages. They've got, again, parking areas that would be available to them. These are, these type D units are stacked flats. So they've got, they're two-level buildings. Again, we want to keep the scale at two levels, possibly three levels that we might explore here. Although I think what we're showing in this rendering is a two-level building here. These are two-level townhouses with rear garages. So we've got kind of a traditional alleyway that allows you to kind of keep the garages off of the front yard, which kind of contributes better to the walkability. And these type units here, as I said, they're, they do have front-load garages, single-stall garages, one for each unit. So we kind of minimize the impact of the garage. But again, they help address the ability to kind of maintain walkability along that pathway. So the streets have on-street parking. Again, those are actually things that help calm traffic. So again, a lot of what you're seeing here are methods that are employed in the city, in many cities, that contribute to neighborhoods, to walkability and to safe passways. We are taking kind of these little, call it strange little fingers that are part of the site and leveraging them into things that we think, again, allow us to start to create a sense of place for this neighborhood. We have a small community center and a community garden area that's along the pathway. So while you may not have large backyards, you've got the ability to kind of exercise your green thumb if you want or at least have some green space that's part of your neighborhood. And then the community center as well would be, again, something that would be a communal-type center that would be available for the neighborhood itself, but also possibly beyond that. So again, hopefully what you're seeing here is something that knits into the neighborhood well in terms of its infrastructure. It is a denser-type product, but it still has the things that we think are very important, front porches, walkability, and the ability to kind of have floor plans that are really appealing.
Can I add a quick question?
Yes, sir.
The last slide. At the front, I can't see from here. Is that Indiana right? That Indiana straight line through there?
Yes.
Is there any houses turned towards Indiana? I can't tell from here.
Yes, right here.
All those front houses.
Yep.
Which type of homes would be, that you could build that would be truly affordable? And where would they sit on this property, on this slide?
Well, hopefully they're all affordable in a certain sense.
I mean, truly affordable. Where would they sit on this slide?
How are you, I guess, when you say affordable, what do you mean by that? The small, these are the smaller units here, so smaller floor plans, if that's...
So which type of homes? Which style of homes would you be able to make and lay on that floor plan?
These are stacked flats here. These are stacked flats here. These are townhouses without garages. And these are townhouses with garages. We have a two-bedroom, and these particular...
First-time teacher's home, where would it be?
So I think what's important about this is every one of these housing types can be affordable. But none of them, because they're new construction, will be affordable to somebody maybe $12, $15 an hour unless we bring some public support to it, right? And that can be state dollars or federal dollars or local dollars. But the point that I was trying to make earlier is that it is expensive to build brand-new. And our goal is that each one of these building types will have affordability within it and that we will have a significant percentage of these units that will be affordable to the folks that are most important to this community. But what we couldn't say is that, well, this kind of product is reserved for those people and the rest of the product is reserved for the higher-dollar people. What we want to do is say is that it's all for everybody. And we're going to have to figure out the ways that we finance it and prioritize those things as we go through the process. Does that help to kind of clarify what you're looking for?
There's a range of housing type. So depending on where you're at in terms of your ability to afford, I think we're trying to get it so that it's got a pretty diverse offering of housing types. So if, as Ryan kind of talks about, whatever you spend on this housing is what you will have to pay for the housing. So the smaller format units are going to be less costly for those that want to be in the neighborhood and they maybe don't have the same ability to have the ability to afford the townhouse with the garage. So we're trying to make sure that we've got different types of housing types in the neighborhood.
Which would be the least expensive section then, based on your type?
If you translate, if you translate size of the housing unit into affordability, the smallest ones are going to be probably more in the stacked flats. You've got more density, you've got the ability to kind of just bring the cost per unit down. So the ones that have garages are, because they're going to cost more because they've got a garage.
So the answer to the question would be the stacked flat?
Stacked flats would be the smallest units, the most affordable based on cost of unit, yes.
Do we have any idea what that price range would be?
At this point, we don't. We're using strategies that we've used in other areas to just try to make sure that we are, the formulas that we're using are going to be those that kind of contribute to more cost-effective type housing solutions. But in terms of the exact cost, we haven't gotten that far. We're more in a planning stage right now with the notion that we're trying to do some things that are going to be able to contribute to more affordability.
Approximately how many units are in that plan?
I don't even remember. It's more than 80, but I don't remember.
Do we know the size of the type C? That was the one Charlie C, that was the one drawing that didn't have any square footage?
I think the type C, there are one and two bedrooms. I think the ones are about 600 square feet and the twos are about 750.
That's good, okay.
Yes, sir. It's mine.
As far as accessibility goes, obviously the stacked flats are going to be, I mean, the others are multi-storied. Are there going to be things like elevators taken into account so that you don't, aren't stuck with only accessibility for people who have disabilities, etc., on the bottom levels? How are we making sure that there's enough, that people aren't limited in what's available?
Good question. I think, obviously, the units that have upgrade, like the townhouses, although they'll be two-level units, the stacked flats...
Something that's not multi, because, I mean, if we're talking about, I mean, one of the things you want is to be multi-generational.
Correct.
That's one of the things that society, like, we need so desperately to make sure we're keeping that. So the stacked flats, are we going to have stairs to get to the second levels? Or have we, has that been thought through?
It has been. We actually are showing elevators in the plan. I think from a code perspective, they don't require them because you have accessible units at grade. But I think, obviously, we would, just for universal design, we would encourage, I'm not the developer, but I think right now we're showing it as an elevator access second level. So we would hope that the developer would choose to do that.
How many square feet on the site, or is the site, what's their smallest unit going to be? What's their largest, how many square feet? Are you looking at...
I think the smallest unit right now, if we stay with one bedrooms in the stacked flats, is around, just under 600 square feet, 590 square feet. The largest unit, I think, is around 1,200. It can grow. I think the three-bedroom version, yeah, I think the three-bedroom version is the 1,200 square foot.
They can actually pay one year.
Is it 1,450? Okay, thank you.
They have property tax payments. Either building across Maria. And that's going to be around, that guy got a $3.4 million grant from the state of Michigan. He got 10 years tax benefit. And he charged, he charged at 1,850 foot for a rent of 1,250 square foot joint. I haven't seen your numbers at all. I'm just making that point. You know, the affordability thing, just going to get the mind working. So I don't know. But it is going to get activated if people purchase these units and just develop.
I think since the city owns the property, I think the city's obviously going to help have an important decision-making in whoever develops this. But I do think our experience with development across the state in any sized community is you need those kinds of incentives in order to kind of bridge the gap between the cost of construction and the cost for the sale or rent. So I think, whether you're doing market rate or not, I think those are things that are going to be important considerations. But especially here, I think, whatever these guys can stack onto the incentive plate, they're going to do whatever they can do to make sure that, with the ability to kind of make them have a stronger emphasis towards affordability, they're going to do.
So one of the things that's important here is, Mike and I have both done a lot of work with those programs that you mentioned, the tax abatement programs, the state grant programs, the other flexible loan programs. So this product has been designed to take advantage of all of those programs. But ultimately, what we'll do is we'll first take your feedback so that you tell us how close we are to the kind of neighborhood that you want to see. And then we'll refine the drawings, we'll come back to the city and we'll say, here are all of the programs that we could potentially take advantage of. But every one of those programs comes with strings, right? And so what we want to be able to do is talk together about what are the strings that are attached to each of those programs? And do we like the strings or do we not like the strings? Can we live with them or can't we? And that's going to be a collective decision for both the city and for you as constituents to really decide which of the programs do we want to pursue? How do we want to prioritize affordability against quality construction, against accessibility, right? All of those things are balancing acts. And so over this process, this first design review that you're all conducting with us now is giving us feedback into how close are we? Do we have some things that we really need to fix or tweak? And then the deeper we get in, the more we'll start to talk about what incentives do we use, which units are affordable, how many buildings are accessible? All of that will continue to come. And so this feedback that you're providing now is instrumental for us to figure out, okay, what do we need to fix, what's working well, and how do we pursue the next step?
Yes, sir.
My question, I guess, is mainly for, I guess it would be for the city council. Because if you put 80 units right there, I'm trying to figure out that, I know that the traffic flow is going to go up. So how is that going to work with Broadway Street here? With that being, you know, you took away two lanes and down to one lane on East Side, if you put 80 new homes over there? Because that right there is going to cause more problems with that right there. Because to me, since y'all got all y'all here right now, that was one of the most goofiest things I think you've seen yourself here ever did. So that would definitely have to be fixed before you put 80 homes over there.
Well, we just found out that it would be, what, five minutes ago, maybe?
If it was 25.
So we just found out about that. And this is just a particular plan.
Correct.
And, you know, the bike guy is, I've got a lot of really positive feedback when families walking across the street. So it's not that.
It's going to be when you got that snow out there. That's not going to work with one lane.
I haven't seen any bikers out there this long.
When all those people come in for Blueberry Fest and Fourth of July, that's going to be a problem.
Let's hope we don't have snow.
And I think as Ryan mentioned earlier too... And I, I think as, as Ryan mentioned earlier too, how we plug in is important, so the stormwater, utility issues, the traffic issues, obviously, we haven't tested that yet. We, we need to understand, I mean, things that would be good, um, and maybe, maybe it's a show of hands, I don't know, best way to get reaction, is, um, are you seeing a strong sense of walkability in, in the design? Show hands, ever, anyone? And does everyone, show of hands of everyone that feels that that's important for this development? So, I think these are things that are helpful to us. We can, we can look at different types of, uh, housing types, but the infrastructure has to be right, and then we can, we can start to, um, we've got a better starting point. So, prioritizing, and again, you've been through developments that haven't done that very well. They, they don't have sidewalks, or they have sidewalks that are almost dangerous to walk on, and you don't have the, um, the, the comfort that you wanna have. They don't have front porches. They turn their backs on the roads. So, again, you're, you're, um, you're not connected in there, and they focus more on just getting housing in the neighborhood versus doing it in a, in a proper and thoughtful way, and I still think those are important. I won't ask about the affordability, because I think that's our job, is to try to work with the tools that we have, both in terms of design, but also incentives, to, to make sure that we can bring some housing types that are affordable to a broader range of, of individuals, uh, and households. Uh, and then the sense of community. I think going back to the, the realization that, in the, in the understanding that any infill project, uh, or new neighborhood that it's brought into the city, needs to really plug in and feel like it's, um, got the same sense of scale, again, a strong focus on putting the denser, um, kind of stacked flats in an area that kind of, that's what it's been over time. It's been a kind of a, a larger piece of architecture there, so it, while it's maybe not a single-family home, if we had any place on the site to put that, that became the most, uh, obvious place to put it. But, um, familiar kinds of scales along the streetfront, familiar kinds of, uh, entourage and connectivity, um, those are things that are very, very important. Trying not to be a, a complete foreign object within the community, um, yet still, um, challenge, uh, how we kind of get a little bit more denser, more density in the neighborhood. So, these are things that were very, very important to, uh, the design as we, as we looked at them, so, uh, so let's, questions, as, as Ryan said, we wanna-
How do you keep, uh, methods somewhere else?
There are, there are methods that we are using in other, uh, communities, and again, that's developer, whoever's developing these has to kind of understand what's important to the community. So, for instance, we're doing a, um, project in Boeing City, very much a resort town, uh, in fact, it's got a little bit more year on possibly even than South Haven, because it's got the winter traffic. So, they're restricting, um, rentals can't be any less than twelve months. So, you can't have, and they will not allow Airbnbs, they don't allow the kind of short-term seasonal rentals. So, that's one way to do it, but there are other methods I'm not as familiar with, but that's a very common, not just in resort communities, but in other communities where you're gonna create a nice housing type, uh, of decent quality, and you wanna make sure that the people that, um, you're targeting for are the ones that are, are the ones that are living there.
And we own the property, that's, that'll be your priority.
Yes, sir.
Were you doing a bar per unit?
Uh, we tend to try to make sure we have at least one space per one-bedroom and two spaces per two-bedroom. We are higher than that here, and I think, um, again, just, I don't remember the exact ratio, but we're very cognizant of that, and we wanna make sure that, uh, whatever we do supports the, the population that's going to be residing there, so it's somewhere one and a half plus spaces per unit.
When you talk about walkability, I think it's important that it's not just walkability within the development, but walkability to connect to downtown and the surrounding neighborhoods.
Yes, I agree. That's why, oops, what did I just do? Too many buttons on this thing.
The green check to downtown.
Yes. So, this is, it's a great question, hopefully you understand, I mean, the, you see so many new developments that go in, even into neighborhoods like this, that are foreign, they, they have different, they don't connect with the roadways, uh, they just, you immediately sense that you're almost not welcome, just because it's so much different than what's around there. That's why it was important to take Humphrey and continue that toward the trail. And as, as the gentleman just said, that trail gets you north and south. You still, obviously, are connected to Indiana. If you want to, uh, uh, get to the trail from over here and walk through this way, we wanna encourage that, we want that connectivity to be there, we want it to feel like it's, it's, it's just kind of continuing the fabric that's already in existence.
Is there a consideration on the property, the retail space? And I ask that for one reason, I love the concept of walkability, I love the concept of community, those folks are a long way away from selling.
There is a party store right here. It's, that's, so, that's a great question, that I think would be good to get other thoughts on that, because if, again, a developer's going to look at this and wanna make sure they've got a market for what they're going to be, uh, putting on the property. If there's a market for retail in this area, and it's not uncommon, obviously, to have a neighborhood retail, very, very common, you've already, you've got it, as I said, right on this corner, so it's possible. This corner would be a wonderful opportunity for a small neighborhood, um, retailer. But, so that, that's definitely something that, um, whether it's in our plan, um, is not as important as allowing that kind of thing potentially to be in a plan.
And I'm not, I'm not necessarily advocating, I'm just saying, it does change by nature. If you're trying to increase walkability, limit car traffic, if they have both places to, if they're the basic needs, that's not gonna let's partner.
I agree.
I wouldn't be surprised though, to see the convenience store that's there, look at new opportunities.
True.
And that might be something that would help them out as well.
Other questions? I'm sure there are. Yes, sir.
I'll put my green dot on the, uh, keeping that, uh, more east-west traffic, and as far as that, that's good traffic. There'd be a green dot for me, having a lot of new traffic going that way, I would put a red dot.
Yeah, we, uh, this is, this stretch from here to here is purely pedestrian, and we did create, uh, just a vehicular loop here, but it's, again, still pedestrian-focused. And again, that was intentional, just to allow, um, movement around the site for vehicles, but we did not think this made sense, you got another street right here, just creating conflicts that could arise. Correct. Right.
That has a, a joint property, and then, um, I guess, I also like the idea of having a greener space on the north end of the property, so whether it's community gardens, or, uh, a community council, it's not for wild hearts.
We did have, we did have, we did have another, um, version that had four more units and that little space, so I think, we did feel that there, you are creating, uh, you are creating a community within the community, and having the ability for them to kind of connect in some ways is, is important, so a small community house, we thought was a good amenity.
Just a quick housekeeping, if you have questions, that's why we're here, we want to hear your questions. Um, we are recording tonight's meeting, so if you could speak up as loud as possible when asking your question, we're hoping to pick up some of the audio onto the recording, but we also want the full audience to hear. If you would like to use the microphone, that's what it's here for, so feel free to, to come on up. Thank you all.
I saw somebody had a question over here.
I hope everybody can hear me from here. My name is Dorothy Sherrod, and I live in this community, and I've been in this community for over forty years. When we first started this idea of what was going to take place with this property, I'm only a block from this property. We had a brainstorming idea of what the people in the community wanted to see become of this property. We brought our recommendations, we talked about retails, we talked about other things that would be conducive to our community, but now all we're hearing is affordable housing. What happened to the ideas that we brought before the city council? Why are we not taking our ideas into consideration? We are the residents here. We've been the property owners here. So, why aren't we being heard?
What, what's, are there specific things I'm not as familiar with, with?
Those, those-
Those things that we brought two years ago, when we first had our meeting, and it was said to us, as this community, that your ideas would be taken into consideration. The ideas have not been brought forth, we have not had any discussion on the ideas. So, that's a problem for me. I'm a taxpayer, I live here, I paid taxes in this community for over forty years. Why is it that you can take this piece of property that has been in our community, and you decide what's going to happen to it? But you don't listen to the residents? I guess, I have a problem with that.
I've got a problem with that statement. Can I just address that, so I am on city council, if I take this personal, the first meeting, my understanding was, we would listen to the residents, which we did, and the residents gave, including your neighborhood, gave input. Then we heard a speaker, which was Mr. Phil Patrick, who's an expert in housing, so we thought, it would be good to have the city have an outside consultant come here and give ideas, which he's had two different meetings, and this is the third. But my understanding tonight is to have everybody here, have people watching this on TV, so we can get your input, because you do it, you're the third and fourth generation. So, we do wanna have your input. We're not dismissing anything that was said in the past, we're just keep moving forward and keep changing as we learn more information. Nothing is etched in stone. This is a, a, a community for your community, for the town, with everybody's input, especially those who live nearby. So, we're, Dorothy, we're not dismissing anything that was said in the past, we're just trying to fine-tune and get more information, that's all. Nothing is etched in stone yet.
Mr. Reese?
Yes?
This was even before your time.
Oh.
He was not even a member of the city council. This is what I referred to, I referred to, before your time.
So, it's before two years ago?
It is before, that's right, absolutely.
And I was a part of that, when we were in the southern part of the city.
Yes, we were.
And one of the plans, which I think you can find printed in the, uh, master plan, is in fact, a, 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 an affordable housing plan, that looks very similar to this. That's actually in the two thousand and eighteen master plan that you can find online, and that was one of the plans that we looked at and we put a little dot to it on. There was also another potential plan too as well, to make it more community-based space, remember that one as well?
Yes.
Like maybe a, a park, and a gathering spa, and maybe even some athletic, so there was more than one plan, that we all sat down together and voted on with little dots, I think, and we were in the cafeteria that show.
Absolutely.
So, this actually does look like one of the plans that we did discuss and looked at as a community. And in fact, we felt so empowered with both plans, we put both of them in the master plan. And so hopefully people go and look at that, because they are both two good, strong plans of how we could potentially utilize that space, and you were there.
Okay, I understand, and I give you that respect, but you could have had the courtesy to at least let us know that these plans were being combined. Nobody never contacted us to let us know what phase of planning that would be. So, I don't know why you couldn't have sent us an email to let us know that there was some more discussion going on, and there were some phases of the plan that was being changed.
I'm not familiar with any of that changes. I think everything we've done has been out in public, in a public meeting, so I, I don't know anything that's been done in a back room, but, uh, I don't know what else to say. I've got a lot to work on.
Yeah, Dorothy, I think, I thought it devolved, I thought this all evolved, because I just assumed you knew that.
No, 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 this is not the beginning of the process. The beginning of the process was when we met over there, and there were other people here that was in that meeting, and that we discussed some things that we wanted to see of this property.
And Dorothy, this is a conceptual plan, and I think one of the challenges we continue to have is where, we sat down a few years ago, we said, we have a piece of property, what are our needs, what are our wants, what are our desires? And sometimes there's a, I feel there'd be a little bit of a disconnect, because we, in reality, Patrick said, and we have a huge need for housing. We are every single day, every time I go into a business, talk to our young professionals, we need housing. We had another plan that talked about recreation for this space. We have quite a bit of recreational space in this area. Ball fields, soccer fields, parks, you know, Eldenberg Park just improved, so we've been looking at all of that, and it's important that we take that all into account. This is a concept. We're here to discuss the concept. Mr. Corby just turned around and said, green dots, red dots, that's what we're here to talk about. This plan is done? We have done that. This plan is years in the future, so we're here to discuss it. Okay, so it's important that we all kind of line up and get together. We're not turning our back on the concept of recreation, I would put that way up on my wish list, it's on Chris's wish list, he would love nothing more than to see this area approved, but it all has to come together.
But it's all not coming together.
This is the beginning.
As a concern of the residents, it's all not coming together, and I'm sorry.
And I'm-
I'm sorry, it's not, it's not coming together according to what we would like to see in our neighborhood. Now, I'm sorry-
Because I would think that's a meeting, I heard-
I am sorry that, you know, it's not coming together like that, but we came together, we had the discussion.
Well, perhaps it's the time to identify those things.
I'm curious, what, what, what things are you not seeing in this plan that maybe you were-
I have, I have to agree with, uh, with, with Miss Sherrod, you know, because this process, it is like it's not going anywhere. You started a couple years ago, and here we are, talking about the same stuff, and then the plans have changed to majority of, of homes, and it, and you're not seeing, um, some of the things that she's, that she's stating, and I don't care what Mr. Phil Patrick say, I don't know where the jobs are at for people to be able to afford these. And I kinda think personally, my own opinion, is that we wasted our money on these people, and that's my own personal opinion. And I think that this is a, kinda like a load of bull, because how many times are we gonna have to come here, look at another drawing, a phase, six months later, and not get nowhere? Then we come back a year later and not get nowhere, we're really just spinning our wheels, to really be honest with you? Because when is it gonna be some, some, some progress? How long is it, how long is it gonna take? What is, can we get an answer on that? How long is it gonna take? Is this a five-year? He just said it's gonna take years.
It is.
So, how, how many, is it, is this a five-year plan, ten-year? I'm asking the mayor now, is it gonna be a five-year plan, a ten-year plan? What's, what's the year plan on that?
It's kinda funny, because the last time we met, I told you at that time, we had to go tear down the building, we have to plan to make this happen. She's telling you, we're, we're planning too fast.
How long is it gonna take?
It's not going fast.
I'm saying, how long? I'm, I'm telling you what I'm saying right here, how long is it gonna take? Is this a five-year or ten-year? Can you give us a specific on that? So, we won't keep coming here, listening at them, coming with the same old tired drawings, and then we come with the same old tired roundabout conversation, is it five years or is it ten years?
It'll be many years.
Oh, well then, it ain't no use, we might as well go home if it's gonna be many years, you're talking fifteen years from now, we might as well go home and eat dinner.
Ahmad, this is what I'll tell you, if you wanna be part of this process, make new plans, I would say around, if you're willing to get into it.
This is part of the process. We, we having a conversation is part of the process. I just wanna know, if this is gonna be many years, we might as well go eat dinner. That's what we need to go do, amen, and let's go eat dinner, because this is much crap.
Really get back to the topic.
I, I, I think I was, um, what are the, what are the, let's try to be productive here, I'm a designer, that's what I've been asked to do, we do, we work on communities around the state. What are the things that you're, what are the specific things that you're not seeing here? If we wanna, from my perspective, I'd like to get your input, uh, the sooner we have a plan that makes sense, the- Uh, the sooner we have a plan that makes sense, the sooner it can get implemented, I guess, is, is, is my understanding. But what, are there components that you all are not seeing in this that I think we need to kind of look at? And this is, this is your opportunity to, to, to speak to that.
Okay, I can understand that. When the Chinese came home after World War II, there was a possibility for the, the.
Nobody can hear.
I can talk now, there's, everybody can hear.
Yep.
Okay. I just forgot that's all. Okay. After World War II, when all the Chinese came home, and they didn't have nothing, we have the capability of building homes. Remember them? Some of them are still existing to this day. So we give them something that they can start up. We call them startup homes, right? Why don't we give people something like that? That's something that's possible. It was possible before. We can do it again. Okay? Because some of them don't have living wages anymore. There's the correlation. You don't have the money. You cannot afford it. All that nice stuff that you've given us and the examples that you've given us, that's all nice and good. But what if people cannot afford it? Okay, that goes back to this. If you cannot afford it, we don't want you here. I don't care if you cannot have a car or it's walking space or whatever. It looks all beautiful and all that nice, but it's just sugarcoating the situation. What we need in our town equally to our tourism is people that have living wages that can afford it. Okay? You don't need fifty thousand dollar a year market things to afford thirteen hundred dollar whole month for rent. Some people are way below that. Okay? We're not talking about low income housing. We're talking affordable housing. And that has to be possible. It has to be made possible.
Yes. This, this, this is, hang on a second.
Very anxious about that. And I can't, I don't know your name, but I'm a hundred percent.
I'm a hundred percent. It's so nice to meet you. Thank you. And we're on the same page. Thank you very much.
I work for the immigrants in this country, the people that are coming to this country. And I work with homeless people that have a job. Some of them have two to three jobs, but guess what? They have no housing. They cannot afford it. That's all I have to say.
So I, I, I think there was, there's a failure on my part to communicate what's possible here, right? So if it's a priority of the community, we can make some of these units affordable to folks who can't afford more than five hundred dollars a month. Right? But it, it depends on how we prioritize the tools that are available to us. And how many of those units do we want to be affordable at five hundred dollars a month? And how many do we want to be at a higher rent rate, right? And it all depends on which tools do we want to use? And how much public dollars do we want to invest in the site? Or how much recreational space do we want, right? The feedback that we want is for you to tell us, what do you want to see here? What did we get wrong about this? And I understand that there was feedback going back years that frankly, we weren't aware of and we're happy to incorporate in. And what we'll do is tell you, these are the trade-offs, right? Economically, these are the trade-offs that we make from one plan versus another. Uh, but if a more affordable rate is what you want, when I showed the median income slides, that wasn't saying that's the one income that we're gonna target on the site. It was just giving you a sense of what's the average income in the county. If, if what we need to do is target our retail service workers and the folks who are only earning twelve dollars an hour, then we need to get a lot of apartments that are affordable at five hundred and six hundred dollars a month. And that is possible. We can do this. With this design, we can do it. But what we've got to do is talk through collectively as a community, because we have neighbors who live across the street or nearby. And we need to make sure that everybody's kind of on the same page, or at least we're all rowing in the same direction. And I think to the question about timing, that's really up to the community. So i- if we can get through a process where we get agreement about what we want to see, by spring, we can be moving. We can have financing in place and we can start phase one. But if that's too fast, we can slow way down, right? So this is really to be driven by all of you. I really appreciate that the city council is here and that the township board is here. To hear all of your input, that's critical. But it's, what we've got to do is make sure that what you're doing is telling us, this is what I want. We, we know we're wrong about some things up here, but we need you to tell us, what did we get wrong? And then what do you want to see in its place? So I heard more affordability at the lower level income. I think what I'm hearing here is more recreational space? Is, is that what we missed from the previous in, input session? Or should we just go back and, and find out what those?
Yes.
What, recreation?
Recreation and also I'm on key with that affordable, because let's be realistic. All for everybody. That what you're showing us is not realistic.
It depends on how you finance it, right? So there are lots of programs out there that we can, we can make those products affordable to the price points that we want to target. But that's not a defense of the product, right? If what you want to see is something different, then Mike can design something different, right? What we want to hear is, what, what would you prefer to see? And then we can design to those preferences.
I, I want to say something too, to that woman's point. I think what we're, the track we're on is following a lot of the principles that the post-war housing. They still were walkable neighborhoods. They still were very, um, pleasant neighborhoods to be in, but they were smaller. They were easily replicated. And they were, they weren't the, the twenty-five hundred square foot homes. They were nine hundred to twelve hundred square foot homes. That's where we're headed here. We're, we, we don't, size does make a difference, because the more you build, the more it will cost you to have. So designing efficiently is something we need to start to look at again. You know, people say, boy, these nine hundred square foot homes, these are really kind of unique little homes. You can go across America and find homes that are six hundred square feet, homes that are seven hundred square feet, that families of five or six lived in. Some, some, where along the line we forgot that you don't need a lot of space as long as you're knit into the fabric of the community in the right way. That, the, the size of the house is not as critical as the context that the house resides in. And I think we're, we're working to the things that we can do. We're, we're doing smaller sized units. So that this is today's kind of affordable model. And it doesn't have to be income restricted necessarily, but it has to be efficient and it has to be nice. And it can't forget the things that, um, were parts of those neighborhoods. And I think the thing that bugs me as an architect um, is to just see these developments go in and they focus on affordability in the, in the worst sense of the way. And they forget about all the other kind of aspects and guiding principles that should be part of it. And I did see another plan that had a lot of housing on it. And I think it, it was a, it was a decent plan, but it missed some of the things I think that we're starting to see here too. So, uh, anybody? Yeah, it's in.
Going back, going back to the question that you raised, Dorothy. I think what we're seeing is there is a lack, a loss of continuity in the progress towards what's happening on the site. But that, that, that information is available, you guys pretty readily, it's part of city record. And as I recall, I might as well help you with this real a little bit, because I'm getting old. We came up with three other plans. And it wasn't just one meeting in this room.
Yes.
We had meetings over a series of times.
Yes, we did.
They weren't called chakras, they were called, uh.
Shoretas.
Shoretas. Mr. Rod.
And each time, we refined them and refined them and refined them. And as I recall, what we left it with was three prototypes that went in. I don't think there was a final decision. And I don't think there was an intention to have a final decision. But I do think that you're in it correctly. At least what I remember, the biggest difference is, how much of the room are we gonna actually have for? Well, let me just say, are you treating my housing developments and my community built there?
Correct.
Um, so one of the plans had a large portion of plans set aside for a community center, like Boys' Club, Girls' Club, Y M C A, something that, that was a, a, a center of that community. And I think it shocked a lot of people to see the drawing, see a, you know, a, a little, little poster, saying, oh yeah, there's a community center. So I just think it was a lack, lack of continuity of thought of how we got there. I certainly understand, and you may have my empathy, that this is just a vision. This is a prototype that we got from the best information you had to work with. And I'm suggesting to you that the information that is gathered is available to you at city records and take a look at those three plans.
Yes, sir.
So I was a part of some of those meetings in the beginning. Um, I stood as kind of like an outlier. Although I hear what, uh, Mr. Rod is saying, hear what Jamal was saying, I recognize what this gentleman said. I stood during those meetings as an outlier. Because at the time, I felt that what we need in this area is more affordable housing. And there was two groups of category, uh, of people that was identified in the survey. I believe that the city did. I think, I, I may be quoting this wrong, but the seniors and the working professionals, uh, we were, if it was affordable housing, there was just not enough to cover in those, in those areas. Um, I personally didn't think that we would be trying to duplicate a bright hill in that area. I, I didn't think that. But I do, I am pushing for true affordable housing. I would like to use every, now this is just my opinion, I, 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 I respect what, what's been said. I would like to use every square foot of that place for affordable housing with a few greenery here, greenery that walk areas. That's my opinion. I, I, I'm not, you know, that's just my opinion, because we need affordable housing. So, uh, again, I never envisioned trying to duplicate a bright hill in that area. Uh, I, I think that may be another topic of discussion, because we certainly need affordable housing at that level also. But I thought originally, we were looking towards affordable housing for the working professionals and maybe the retired seniors. That's, that's what I thought in the beginning. That's what I thought we were pushing for. But it doesn't sound like, I must have missed a couple of meetings. So it doesn't sound like I got the full picture. So now, if we're gonna throw in, I was just questioning about how are we gonna make this affordable for the working professional? And you struggle with that, but then the gentleman come back and say, oh well, we can make it for five, six hundred dollars? How can you let that kind of stuff come out? And when I asked about true affordable, you struggled with it. So I'm getting confused with this whole. So I thought in the beginning, this would be for the seniors, the retired that are looking for, uh, and the working professionals, those, uh, police officers that's living out of town, all in Zelig, in Olive. Teachers that we are losing because they can't afford housing in this area. We can't keep teachers now. We started the school year with five or six teachers down. And now there's a shortage and it makes it even worse. Because now they're letting people teach, kids, uh, your, your professionals teach to have a certain amount of credit that's working towards a teaching degree because teaching down. But with you add the lack of affordable housing, it is making, it's making it worse to hold on to teachers or attract teachers in this area. And that goes for any other occupation. I worked at the plant for many years and a lot of engineers were getting homes in San Joe and other places because the, the, it was, they couldn't find housing in this area that was affordable. So I thought we were looking towards working professionals and perhaps maybe retired seniors.
Yes, we are. Yes.
And, and can I just say something? Uh, the, I, I didn't struggle to answer the question about affordable. Affordable is defined by the state in a certain way. And some people, um, it's, I run into this in almost every committee that I work in, is how, what your definition of affordable is. Is it the state's definition or is it something else? What you're describing, um, is attainable housing. If you, so we don't mix up words, but I think what, what we're trying to accomplish here is exactly what you're describing. I don't think there's been a disconnect, at least in what we're trying to head toward. And this is, this is, uh, housing centric. If, if you, if you need another park in the area or you need another community building in the neighborhood, um, these are the times to understand that. But this is focused on trying to, um, be a little bit more solving some of the housing challenges. And so having a different range of housing types here, product types, allows you to kind of, uh, get to the different, uh, spectrums that you're gonna be dealing with. But I think everything, everything we're here, in certain people's definition, I think would be considered affordable.
Yes, yes. And, and I, I want to reiterate that I think it sounds honestly like we're very much on the same page. We're trying to achieve the exact thing that you just said. Support our workforce, support our teachers, support our firefighters. But what we don't want to do is say, we're gonna build everything the way we think it should be built. We're showing just building types and you tell us, should it be a hundred percent affordable? Should it be seventy-five percent affordable, right? And then, then our job is to figure out, okay, how do we finance that? Where do we get the dollars to make sure that we can keep the number of units that you want to see affordable in the right price range? And so I think my mistake earlier, when you asked which one of those building types would be affordable, my response was, well, we can make any one of them affordable. It depends on what you tell us. What I wasn't being clear about is, it, it really does depend on this conversation. And we can make all of them affordable if you would like. We can, we can decide on which building types, or we can make one out of every three affordable, right? It, it, it takes this process to figure it out. And so that's why we didn't know, is because we need you to tell us what, what you want to see and how much of it.
All right, so I just been in a conversation over the past few days with a woman who has been a resident. She's, um, I think maybe she drove so she's very, I'm not certain, but she has two young adults that live in her, her kids. One is a manager at Menards and another one works, um, you know, a steady job as well. And with their income, when you're talking about utilities, because it's expensive here in South Bay. And you know, not only the electric bill or the, the, it's called encompasses more, because they're so busy. But she, she's not finding a place to live and she needs to be out of the rental by Friday and she's frantic. And, um, so the city, and I, I empathize with her, because my husband and I were in the same situation about fourteen months ago. We were in a situation where, um, so the one's the one property, meaning it's for her own family, which is in fact what's happening with this person I'm talking to. Of course, we need to know that. And we just thought, we could find something. There is nothing around here. I mean, we're not, we're really happy even to own a country. The, the income wasn't our first wish, although I'm very happy to be in LA. So the city, so I have kind of a, a new kind of a lot perception here. I've been hearing a lot about, um, how unhappy, um, other cities put cats on, um, weekly rental properties, helping them somehow that took away from them in some percentages. The percentage are much larger than other coastal cities. So here's an opportunity to rectify all that. You know, let this, let this property go fully to affordable housing to low cost. We were talking about, we was talking about working with, um, migrant. I mean, it's not, it's not just them. There's people who are born here, first generation here and are hard workers and they're only earning twelve dollars an hour, fifteen dollars an hour. Just, why, why shouldn't we just go to housing for that population? Equal out the balance of what's here. I mean, I don't know. I'm hopeful what you're saying.
Yes, that's possible. Um, it, it just takes more, more subsidy, right? Because, again, because we're building new, that means we've got to find more financial resources to, to make sure that we can pay for the cost of construction. But yes, if, if what the, collectively the city decides to do is make it a hundred percent affordable, that is possible. And it's good input to hear. I saw a hand over here, sir. Yes, sir.
The one thing I've learned from the first meeting, which I was here two and a half years ago, and what I've learned from you is density is everything and bringing prices down. Regardless of how we want to define affordability, regardless of the price, if we're gonna bring the price down, you have to have density, which you showed up there. If we want to talk about a park, if we want to talk about clubhouse, if we want to talk about a boys' and girls' club, great idea is it's nice, every inch that we give to that, every foot we give to it, will take that developer and have the price fall on the remaining way, because he's still, he or she has to pay for that spot of land. So we have to, as a group, make a decision. Do we want to have extra parks there? Or accept what we already have and drive the price up? Or do we want the lowest net, net cost of housing, whatever that falls out the bid? And if we want that, we have to have density. To Ahmad's point, when he talks about jobs, because he's broke this up so many times, there is a. there is a direct correlation. If we don't have affordable housing, we can't attract jobs. We can't attract jobs without affordable housing. They go hand in hand. Now, a city council, we're trying to attack at least one of them now because jobs are hard to bring here. But we could lose the employers we already have if we don't start that housing. The next point is the timing. Ahmad complains it's taking too long. Please know, and I think everyone in this room knows it, that this is all over the United States.
Yeah.
The whole country is wrestling, how do we get housing for middle-class America? People's are being priced out. And the worst is the West Coast and the Northeast. All you got to do is read any article. So, we're trying to attack it. It may not be done in six months. It may not be done in a year or two. But don't try to put a pencil to exactly how many months or years it's going to take. But I am proud of this room to have this meeting that we're starting on and we made it the number-one priority for city council. And so we're trying. And I think it says a lot about this town to pay you to come here and help us through this process because you are the expert. So, we're trying to get you, we're trying to get the people guarding in your community, we're trying to get everybody in this room and come together and come up with something. But surely, having you lead the charge and listen to us is better than not having you there. So I think we're on the right path, but it's not going to happen overnight. And I think we're doing the right thing. And I think you're on the right path. It may have to twist the turn and change it a bit, but I think we're on the right path. And I think we're all close to that we are part of this thing.
And I think, no, it's because he brought my name up so I'm attempting to hear real quick on this guy. Man, he can cut it out with...
Mine's chill.
And I know, and you can cut it out with the shenanigans, sir. And I just, I just want to say, the city puts timeframes on a lot of things. And you could put a timeframe on this. Once you square up and, I don't know why we just don't, put it on city council of vote on three different kind of developments, vote and then get the ball rolling. And then you could say, this could be done in five years. Forget it with all that, what he talking about. It, over in New York or wherever, it don't, it don't take all that when you have the finance and the people and all these smart minds in here to get the ball rolling. So you can cut it out, we're going, okay?
One, yeah.
So...
I've just said, but it don't, it don't, community input don't have to take another five years. Just vote on it.
So we're now at eight-thirty. We, we, we did promise that we would start to wrap up at eight-thirty.
You're not here with that research?
Uh, so I think what we're going to do, I, I know that there are still more questions.
She's had her hand up for... She's had her hand up for a quarter.
Oh, you have? Okay. Uh, what I, here's what I want to do. I want to, I want to take a last question. And then after this, we're going to ask you to go up to the boards. Uh, because we could stay here all night.
My question is, is any of this development going to be financed by any tax credit, L I H T C bond money? So it's going to restrict some of the working people, is what it's going to do?
Okay, tell me more.
Okay, so with the L I H T C tax credit, the bond money? L I H T C tax credit bond money?
Yes.
All of that funding is geared towards a restricted income household. Been in this business for twenty-eight years. Everything that these people are talking about is going to be the nightmare that they're going to see.
Okay.
So when you get that tax credit dollar, they're going to cap you at an income. And for a single person, that's about nineteen thousand dollars a year right now. So that nineteen thousand dollars a year, single person, is not going to be able to afford any of those tiered pricings that you guys are talking about.
So, I hear what you're saying. The way that oftentimes we'll structure a deal is where the project has both the affordable unit as well as the market rate unit.
So you're going to do a mixed unit community? Now, those market rate units and those mixed units, how are you going to combine that? Because in that market rate, those people are going to be in a mindset of a different product type
Yes.
than those in that tax credit?
Yes.
So how are you guys going to put that together where it's going to work for the entire community?
So, that's part of this process, is the way that we put that together. And depending on if that's a financing solution that the city wants to pursue, we go out and we find the developer that's done it ten times already
Okay.
and has learned from, from having done it before. Um, we've got partners across the region, across the Midwest that have done those kinds of projects.
I'm very familiar with those.
I, I, I'm sure you are. Uh, and so that is one way that we could finance a project, but it's obviously not the only way.
Okay.
And it sounds like you're a great resource. And we're going to want to bring you in on some of those conversations when we talk about financing, if you're open.
Sure.
You know, there's ways too. You're very familiar. Well, there, there are also ways, you know, the city could look at things we could potentially do. We own the property.
Okay. So, how does that play into how it's financed? How would the developer...
Well, maybe the developer pays a penny for it.
Very, very cheap.
Maybe the developer pays a penny for the land.
Okay, and that's awesome.
And, or, you know, and, and these are just, you know, ideas, like you said. Or the reduced cost for utilities. There are things we could do to incentivize, to help lower the overall cost of a particular project. And that could be something we could do as, as a need. I, I don't know. I've only got a couple more meetings.
I don't want to...
You know what I mean? But, but there's the creativity of how all of the dollars go into a project.
Everybody's telling me they have one more question. I, I don't know. It's up to you guys, how long you want to continue, as they get to the boards.
Is that the best way for us to continue to get feedback and, and stay in tune with what's going on? Because what I've heard is people think that they all, they're not eating in relation. So is the best way for us to get information? Or is the best way for us to continue to provide?
Continue coming. So, this meeting tonight will be recorded, or it has been recorded. It's going to be posted onto the city's website. The presentation file will be posted onto the city's website. A third session will be planned, will be held in this room. We want everyone to continue coming. And here's the pep talk. This process is not going to be easy. Diverse opinions are going to come out.